Good evening, welcome to the October 6th regular city council meeting of the City of Ellensburg. We will begin with the Pledge of Leadings led by Councilmember Palmer.
I pledge the leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Goodlow?
Here.
Loquith?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
And then...
Councilmember Beauchamp is having some technology challenges. She will hopefully join us here.
Okay. We'll hold off on that then. Proclamations, page seven and eight in the packet. Page seven, Public Natural Gas and Power Week, and page eight, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, of which I will have an issue at the end of the meeting to discuss with council. Both those are in there for you if you'd like to read them. We have no awards or recognitions, and we are on to approval of the agenda, but before we get there, does any member of council or a member of the public wish to move anything from consent to the regular agenda? Okay, so we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed. That motion passes. Consent agenda starts on page nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed. That motion passes. We're on item six A, which is page one hundred and eight, Affordable Housing Commission appointment. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Absolutely. So we have Lily Frye, who's gonna introduce our appointee.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Sarah Seiverson, who is interested in joining our Affordable Housing Commission and was recommended by a subcommittee of the Affordable Housing. Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Seiverson.
You can pull it down if you want.
Okay, yeah. I'm really short. Thank you. So, yeah, I'm Sarah Seiverson, and I've lived in Ellensburg for a little bit, over five years, but I've been in Kitata County for longer because I went to school here in Clayalum and, you know, darted around. But I'm very interested in affordable housing. I'm very passionate about it. I'm passionate about just safe, clean, affordable housing in general, and I know that Ellensburg is really in need of that, and so I'd like to do anything that I can to help.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Seiverson?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Counsel?
I'll move to approve the appointment of Sarah Seiverson.
Hold on. Sarah, were you trying to say something else?
Oh, no, I just wasn't sure when I'm supposed to leave.
Oh. You can stand up there for as long as you want. You can go say it if you want. That's fine, too.
So is there a second on that? I'll second if it has a...
We have a motion second to appoint Sarah Seiverson to the Affordable Housing Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six B, one twelve in the packet. This is a Transportation Advisory Committee appointment.
Absolutely. So if council recalls, we made changes to the organization of the Public Transit Advisory Committee and transferred that into a Transportation Advisory Committee and opened up appointments for Ellensburg School District and also for Central Washington University to designate their applicant or their appointment. And so I believe this would be a confirmation of their appointment for the next two. So Betsy Dunbar is here to introduce.
Good evening. I'm Betsy Dunbar, Transit Manager for the City of Ellensburg. So tonight we have two appointments. The first one is Carol Christman, and she is the Ellensburg School District appointee to the Transportation Advisory Committee. And we believe that Carol will be a great asset to our Transportation Committee, and we look forward to working with her and to have her come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Betsy, and thank you to the council. My name is Carol Christman. I am currently the Director of Transportation for the Ellensburg School District. I have been in Ellensburg or the Kitata Valley for about thirty, almost thirty-five years now, and with the Ellensburg School District since 2002, so about twenty-three years. I believe that my appointment to the committee would be, obviously, as she stated, a good choice because I've been traversing our city roads for twenty-three years in a school bus, and maybe it'd be good to be able to comment on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions, Ms. Christman? Thank you. Anybody in the public? Okay, I'm gonna combine this with the next one, so go ahead. We'll just do one vote.
Okay. Our next appointee is from Central Washington University, the Associate Students of Central Washington University, Alex Matheson. And Alex shared with me that when he heard about the appointment, he immediately was interested as public transportation in Ellensburg is one of the things that has consistently saved him as a student because he does not have access to a vehicle. So we also look forward to working with him.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Member? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on the CWU appointment? Okay, so counsel, I'll take a motion confirm... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's good timing.
Sorry about that, folks.
No problem.
Yeah, hi. I'm the ASU appointment, Alex Matheson, the Vice President of the State Government. As far as I'm aware, I'm being appointed to the Transportation Committee. I'm really excited, honestly. You know, I'm one of the students who uses the bus every day. And, you know, with, because I have certain impairments, it's honestly been really helpful having those buses around, and I'm really excited. Sorry, I just came in here. Is there any questions?
Good timing.
Hang on. Just that, counsel, any questions, Ms. Matheson?
I don't.
No. Thank you for your interest. Okay, so again, anybody in the audience? Okay, so I will take a motion confirming these appointments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the confirmation of these appointments as presented. Second.
I have a motion second to confirm the appointment of Carol Christman for the Ellensburg School District and Alex Matheson for CWU to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed. That motion passes. Item six D, page one fifteen. This is the Ellensburg Police Department's Chase Program overview. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, counsel. Ken Wade. I'm with the Ellensburg Police Department. I'm here tonight to talk to you briefly about the Chase Program, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Ellie Carr to get into more of the details. The department started looking several years ago about what gaps we've had as far as identifying and training the future public safety officials that we need in our community, and looking at our reserve program, which is very time-intensive, and then looking at our Citizens Academy, which is very short in duration but very informational. We lost a huge, we created a huge gap. And so with this program, our hope is to not only to encourage, to identify and encourage candidates to come into the program, but it also gives us the opportunity to get our hands on them first. And there's several benefits to that, being a university community in which we are building that partnership with Central Washington University is important, but this program is not limited to just Central Washington University students. We hope to build the program with their input and then open it up community-wide, so others that have an interest in learning about policing in Kitata County would have that opportunity. We're creating a pathway for policing, and through getting ahold of them at the younger age, sometimes we can get, we can make sure that they understand how important it is to make good decisions before you get older, and then you no longer have the ability to become Ellensburg police officers. It's an important program for me and me personally because I believe this is a way that we're gonna build of the future quality that we need in Ellensburg. It's a partnership, like I said, and what I, has the, some of the people that I've been talking to, what I've been telling them is we're trying to build our brand. And what we want is we want the world to know that the best public safety agencies are being trained, or employees are being trained at Central Washington University and being employed by the Ellensburg Police Department. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Carr.
Just for information for the audience, just note that the seventh councilperson, Sarah, is online now, so go ahead.
Hello, everyone. So a little bit more in-depth on what Chase is looking at doing is that experiential learning that is really integrated into what this collegiate experience is also doing, is taking these individuals and walking them through a curriculum that first introduces them to EPD as far as how our department works and how we collaborate and work with our community. One of the key elements that's really important to understand is how policing has changed progressively over the, over time, and our shift more towards precision policing. So that's where being able to show individuals how we take from that traditional mindset to more that community-oriented policing, which is a keystone to what Chief Wade is really all about when it comes to Ellensburg. The individuals here, I'd like to introduce Jasmine and Jashma. They are two of our seven. They were specifically selected by their department as key members that stood out amongst many others, and so just wanna give them the opportunity to be seen and later on be heard. So, so we, we have plans. So we just had our orientation last Friday. They sat there for four hours and went through the entire process of just getting to know the overview, the kind of the wave tops that's really important to EPD. And now they're gonna be looking and shadowing our functional areas, our parole, but most importantly is getting that foundation necessary. What's gonna be kind of that developmental, if you can see, is in the layers. So the core of it is gonna be EPD. Their second quarter with us, which is gonna be that winter quarter, is gonna be looking at spending time with our partners, not just our law enforcement partners, but our community partners, too, that are really integrated into the importance of how we do our community policing. And they're gonna be looking at how to encourage and foster better relationships. So one of the things that I'm gonna be asking of them, they've already had a sneak peek of this, is they get evaluate how well some of the programs that I'm working with, how well they're working, and give suggestions on how to improve. The third quarter is gonna tie the, that precious bow that's gonna prepare them to go on to that community service. And this is not just for individuals interested in law enforcement, it's for any individual who's interested in either federal or municipal or going out and just being a professional. We're gonna be working with them to kind of curtail and polish the resumes, their letters of intent, working at being able to develop that proper presentation. We're gonna give them, may not be something they're looking forward to, but very, very important is a mock board, which is being able to articulate and speak for themselves, which that's gonna be a key part to it all. This is all based off of observations we've made through our hiring process of areas that were kind of shortfalls for some individuals, and what we can do to kind of establish that opportunity to help groom and grow them into those, that, the best candidates. The great part about this is even though we don't have seven slots available in EPD, although that would be wonderful to be able to grow more, but these are individuals that will be able to go out and be diplomats of what Ellensburg offers, what EPD is able to do. So no matter what department, what agency they put a resume into, they'll be able to shine for us. So that's kind of the key heart of it all. Barring any other questions.
Sounds cool. Hey. Any questions? So what are the minimum requirements for being an Ellensburg police officer?
So right now, because we are partnered with CWU, that's our first part, but I do wanna point out the fact that we are gonna be extending not just for Central Washington students, but also to community members as well. If eighteen, they have to be of the age to be able to specifically do ride-alongs. An individual under that age are not able to. They do go through a preliminary, just a general check, make sure that they do have a license, since we're gonna be going about and making sure that they have that proper transportation. As far as like any subsequent, we don't do an in-depth background check, but we do require them to go through a CJA certification because they are gonna be privy to what we do at the department. So it goes into that voting process and prioritization. Right now, as far as filling that application, they have, they basically make their interests known for the CWU track. They go through that Law and Justice Program, and they go through that initial interview and vetting, and then what they'll be doing is they submit a full application, which is quite intensive. It mocks what is also done in most departments is for hiring, so it helps them collect all that information in the first place. They provide their resume, their letter of intent, and making sure that they have all the pieces in place, and then we'll be doing a final interview before we make our priority selection. So it's the individuals that have backgrounds. It's not to say that that's precluding, but it is not an exclusionary requirement, but it does set those priorities as far as selection. Yes, sir.
Just curious, how many cohorts has the Chase Program had over its life? Do we know that number by chance?
I know that very well. This is the first one.
All right, the bar set high. I love it. There we go.
It's the, they know that they're gonna be helping us develop the program. A lot of feedback and even going through the growing pains of just how to make those connections. But the one thing about it that I can say is I've been working with these individuals ever since last spring and getting them into the door, seeing them sit in our training room, all excited, seeing them in their polo shirts, be able to, and now realizing, thank you. So this is a picture of all of them and just that key point to it. So they were thoroughly excited. I asked them to put the polo shirts on, so it was kind of a, they were voluntual to do so for that commemorative image. But the important thing is, is that we do have a very close working relationship with Law and Justice Program. So they, they were a huge help as far as like being able to get past all the necessary gates to get them onboard. But it seems a little bit more, there's a lot of expectations are placed on these individuals as far as what they're gonna be learning, but they have, they have proven themselves so far to be able to meet each of the requirements. So there, if I could ask for the best cohort as to start off with, I definitely got it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to comment? Questions? Anybody online? Okay. Thank you, guys. Good luck. Hope to see you here in a couple years in a different uniform.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, which is public comment on non-agenda items. I'll read the script. So speakers providing comments, there are no online people who indicated an interest in speaking on non-agenda items. So any speaker wishing to comment on non-agenda items only address matters on which the council has control and must concern city business, and you must talk about the item that you put on your registration form when recognized to speak. State your name, whether you live in the City of Ellensburg, Kitata County, or elsewhere. State whether you're representing yourself or others, and say the topic on which you wish to speak for, if you have any comments. Speakers are reminded not to engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting, and our actions do not allow for, or normally don't allow for any action to be taken by council. We may acknowledge and refer. And also, please stay away from any election-related references or comments. And Mr. Kelleher, the pool.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat Kelleher, Ellensburg, here to speak on the, on the pool. When the president of East Swim Team suggested the city consider using the vacant CWU pool to replace Memorial Pool, it sounded like a smart idea. I mentioned it to a friend who immediately shot back, why would CWU hand over their facility to a city that can't even fix their own leaking pool roof? That ended that discussion. The CW pool is off the table. Back in 2018, the city had withheld and associates, a professional firm that deals with roofing, weatherproofing, public sector construction, evaluate the Memorial Pool roof. Their report didn't mince words. All steep slope roof systems are beyond their intended service life and should be removed and replaced. Seven years later, nothing has been done. The city, the city still hasn't started a single feasibility study or planning effort for a replacement pool. Instead, the staff are letting, setting out buckets to catch water from a roof that should have been replaced years ago. The leaky roof isn't going to fix itself. It's up to the city council to act. Four yes votes on a Monday could finally move the project forward in a professional manner, rather than kicking the same leaky can down the road year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine A, which is page one seventeen. This is second reading and potential adoption of ordinance four nine seven two.
Good evening, counsel. Beth Leader, City Clerk. I'm presenting to you tonight the second reading of ordinance forty-nine seventy-two. The city was notified that the business licensing services is updating their, their definition or their transient business threshold exemption from $2,000 to $4,000. At the same time, staff felt that it was a good time to update other parts of the code. So for second reading, we have updated the solicitor license. So we will accept solicitor license applications through the clerk's office instead of the fire or the police department. We'll have them fill out an application similar to the one that they currently do. Then we will issue them a city license. It's a card that is similar to this, where the, the door-to-door salesman will have that available to them when they go door-to-door. We will require them to get a city business license, which was not a requirement before, but they will be required to get a city business license. And we will take care of that administratively. I will notify the police department when I issue one, and then everybody will be notified for that. We are also updating the requirements for penalties. We currently have in the code a $1,000 fine and up to ninety days in jail for violations, but we have added a penalty of $50. And then if we have a, an issue where we need to have larger penalties, which, you know, it's never been an issue while I've been in this position, but if that comes up, then we still have that ability to issue that. So if there's any questions, I can answer those, but it's available for second reading, and that's it for me.
Counsel, questions for the city clerk?
Yeah, I've got a quick one.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have a place on our city website where a citizen could go and see the business licenses of, you know, individuals that are out walking the neighborhood, so they could kind of self-verify or check for themselves?
I can add that. I, quarterly, I update the city business license list, so there's a link on the list that has all of the current city business licenses, but I'd be happy to add to the, that webpage on the city clerk's page where, you know, we would have solicitor, the, the application form, where it'd be available, and then I can add, add, you know, the ones that have been issued. They're, they're usually issued for thirty days.
Okay.
And then if they want to extend that, then they can complete another application, but, but I'd be happy to add that to them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would just mention, folks are also welcome to call the city clerk's office because she's very, very helpful, and also EPD will have the same information.
I just wanted to say thank you for working this out.
Yeah, no, it's an, it'll be an easy.
Great.
An easy.
And I guess one more question. So I have a kid come to the door selling something for his club to go to, I guess it was rugby club.
Oh.
But, you know, Girl Scouts, whatever, do they, they don't get business licenses?
No, we don't require business licenses for minors, you know, selling candy or lemonade stands or anything like that.
That's what I thought, just checking.
Yeah.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any further questions? Anybody in the audience wish to comment? Nobody online. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move second reading and adoption of ordinance four nine seven two, amending Ellensburg City Code, Chapter 6.54, relating to business licensing. Second.
We have a motion second to take second reading and adoption of ordinance four nine seven two, which amends the city code for business licenses. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Beauchamp?
Yes.
Goodlow?
Yes.
Loquith?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington, relating to Chapter 6.54, Business and Occupation Tax, amending Section 6.54.120, 6.54.200, 6.54.260, and 6.54.720 of the Ellensburg City Code.
Okay, page one twenty-four. This is item nine B, ordinance four nine seven three. This will be first reading and consideration for multifamily housing tax incentives, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Lily Frye, Housing Program Manager. Ordinance four nine seven three includes small changes to our multifamily tax exemption, or MFTE program, to improve consistency with other housing programs and simplify administration. The MFTE program allows new multifamily development in the CC and CC II zones to qualify for tax exemption of the improvement value of the property for eight or twelve years. Housing developments can qualify for an eight-year exemption for new market rate units and a twelve-year exemption if they offer 20% of units at affordable rental or ownership cost. This ordinance would lower the affordability threshold from eighty to 115% of AMI to a maximum of 80% of arymedian income for the qualifying twenty, affordable 20% of units. To date, only one development has chosen the twelve-year exemption, and fully market rate properties would still be eligible for the eight-year exemption, but the proposed ordinance change would mean the properties that seek the longer tax exemption, the qualifying units, are set aside for lower-income earners and more affordable for Ellensburg residents. The ordinance would also remove tenant income reporting requirements from market rate properties. While the city would need tenant income information for affordable developments to make sure that tenants and rents qualify, the city does not need, have a need for tenant income data for market properties, and property owners would prefer not to provide it. Reducing the data collected that we don't need also reduces privacy and data management concerns for the city. The remaining challenges, sorry, the remaining changes are moving reporting for all active tax exemptions to a single annual cycle to align with the Washington State Department of Commerce's reporting deadlines, and increase predictability for property owners who in some cases have multiple exempt properties, rather than having each property on its own cycle based on its anniversary date, and giving city staff the option to do onsite property visits rather than requiring them. So staff recommends conducting, first, conducting first reading of ordinance four nine seven three, amending our MFTE program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, questions of staff? Anybody in the audience wish to...
Yeah, I have a question. So do we know what, I guess, the market rate is for a one-bedroom, or, I mean, what's, what's that range? I know there's not...
I don't have for a one-bedroom. I have overall rent is about 1,300 to 1,600, depending on... depending on which source you look at. So that's Washington Center for Real Estate Research or Zillow.
So that's studio to five-bedroom?
Yes.
And that's just average?
Our latest one-bedroom, two-bedroom were in the low, like, $1,200-ish last time I checked.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Again, anybody in the audience? Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move first reading of ordinance 4973 regarding multifamily housing tax incentives.
Second.
We have a motion, second to first reading of ordinance 4973, which revises multifamily housing tax incentives. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington, relating to Chapter 2.30 Multifamily Tax Incentives and amending Sections 2.30.10, 2.30.15, 2.30.30, and 2.30.100 of the Ellensburg City Code.
Page 131. This is Resolution 2525, which is consideration of a donation to the Adult Activity Center.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, Brad Case, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you this evening is a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $5,000 for the Adult Activity Center. Back on September 9th, 2025, Mr. James Altus walked into the center and handed us a check for $5,000 to be used at the Adult Activity Center. Per our city code, any donation over $1,000 that is restricted in nature has to be accepted by the council by resolution, and this donation will help staff purchase equipments and supplies and just help fund the overall operation of the center. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Questions of the staff? Anybody in the audience? Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-25, accept the donation of $5,000 to be used at the Adult Activity Center.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve Resolution 2525, which accepts the Adult Activity Center donation in the amount of $5,000. Is there, excuse me, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed.
I want a discussion.
I wanted to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James Altus.
Okay.
Obviously, we acknowledge the donation with a thank you letter. We always do that.
Very nice.
Item 9D, Resolution 2526. This supports the city's consideration of the council's support for Ellensburg's Proposition 1 Sales and Use Tax for Public Transportation. Yes. I just did it a little bit out of order. Pointed that out.
He was on a roll, and I interrupted.
Okay. Now we're talking about the city council's support or regarding the Proposition 1, which is Sales and Use Tax for Public Transportation. This will be a transit system, and there will be an opportunity for public comment. This is page 133.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, Heidi Behrens-Ternaway, City Manager. I will present this item tonight before you. You have a resolution in support of the city of Ellensburg, Proposition 1 Sales and Use Tax for Public Transportation for our Transit Systems. At your July 7th meeting, council passed two resolutions. One was to add Proposition 1 to the ballot on the general election on November 4th, 2025. And the second was, again, this was new funding for Sales and Use Tax, and the second was contingent on the passing of the ballot measure. It would rescind the sales tax option that was established in, what was it, 2016 for the Ellensburg Transportation Benefit and to distract, eliminating the two tenths of a percent that's set to expire in September of 2026. So we do have some materials on the dais. They're also, I believe, on the back table and out in the hallway, and we have a website set up with information about the proposition and about the services. Folks are welcome to look at that. It's, there's a short link, and per state law, council is allowed to pass a resolution as long as they provide equal opportunity for folks to talk for or against. And so with that, we would stand for any questions.
Council, questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. Public comment opportunity? We do have somebody online. Let's go ahead and take the online first. And just to remind the speaker, same rules apply, three minutes. This is the one time you get to talk about a political or ballot measure. There you go.
Is this for me? Oh, okay. This, yeah, for the record, this is Jim Kirsten, a city of Ellensburg resident. I just, the council would know, I've been speaking with you about this process for almost a year, and I just wanted to thank the council for their hard work and working through all of these issues because I know we were considering all sorts of things. Do we raise taxes? Do we lower taxes? Do we need a transportation system? How should it be? What happens if we don't have taxes? What happens if they get increased? And throughout that work, what's being presented to the voters was the consensus. In fact, it was unanimous vote from the council to send this to the taxpayers, and I hope that we have the same tonight with the council for that. As of anything, maybe everybody isn't exactly perfect on everything, but it's been a long process. It's a good proposal. It's not a tax increase at all. It's the lowest tax rate in the state because we have a really modest system, and we stay within our budget. And I find it's really good for our community. As one of the other people speaking at the meeting earlier today talked about, that's how they get around. So that's just one example of how important it is. So again, want to thank you for that, and I would let you know, I and some other members of the community are also working to get the word out and get information to the voters and hope to get them to support this. But I will stay away from mentioning the exact time and date of when that meeting is going to happen because you didn't want too much of the politics here. But just so you know, that members of the community are with the council to try to get this matter going through. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Anybody in the audience wish to speak about this? Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-26, supporting the city of Ellensburg's Proposition 1 Sales and Use Tax for Public Transportation Transit Systems.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve Resolution 2526, which would have the council support the city of Ellensburg's Proposition 1 Sales and Use Tax for the Transit System.
I think we all supported it, and I think the resolution just says we supported it.
Well, I think the resolution goes beyond that. It says the city council supports an affirmative vote, not just putting it on the ballot. And so there is a distinction between the two, and I'm not making that distinction for myself. I mean, I personally support this. I don't know, you know, that a city measure endorsed by the council necessarily sways voters, but I will say, you know, this is not a change. I mean, it is a change in sort of how the tax is assessed and under what program, under what state program that the tax is assessed. And so it more aligns with the intent of the law. And I will say that absent the funding, you know, the city will struggle significantly with funding any semblance of a transit system that even comes close to what we have. So those are, I think those are, whether you're for this or against this, I think those are pretty objective observations. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 9E, which is Resolution 2527. This was, this is a property acquisition.
Yes. Again, good evening, council and mayor. Heidi Behrens-Ternaway, City Manager. I'm filling in for Buddy Stanowitz, our Energy Services Director tonight. The city adopted an electric utility system plan that looks at the utility needs for the next 20 years. Subsequent to that, we looked at a siting study because one of the items identified was the need for a substation in the next five to 10 years likely at the south end of our community. And the siting study identified a number of options, and we were able to come up with an agreement for a parcel which is just south of I-90, and you have before you a purchase and sale agreement. The property is approximately, or is three acres in size. It does need to be short-platted. It's separated from, I believe it's a 17-acre parcel, again, on the south side of I-90 with a bull road address. It was formerly part of the Canals of Ellensburg Development. And the purchase price we negotiated is $517,500, again, for a three-acre parcel. And it would take a bit to close this. We'd probably be looking at a February or March closure. And if I can answer any questions, give them a hand.
Questions of staff?
Real quick, do we know, I know it's really, really, really early as far as maybe the amount of megawattage that we're planning for that substation, but do we have any idea what the target would be?
It's our standard substation, I believe, are the 23 to 25, and likely that would be the same case.
Just one quick question. It may be in here, and I've probably glossed over it. Is this parcel located within the city limits? And if, okay, okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
But it is right where the studies say we needed it, right?
Exactly. It was one of our prime spots.
Further questions of staff? Anybody in the audience wish to speak? Nobody online. Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2025-27, Authorization to Acquire Real Property.
Second.
Motion, second to approve Resolution 2527, which authorizes the city to acquire property for a potential substation. Any discussion?
I just would point out, just a good example of how the city does business because the funding for utilities is specific to the funds that are raised through the utilities, and the ability to manage and maintain and grow the system ties into this. So I think it's, you know, if people wonder, where does the money come from? Well, it comes from the ratepayers. So it's our, as an owner of the utility, it's our obligation to keep the system up and running. So this is, as mentioned, the south development areas in Ellensburg, demand isn't there, so we're planning for more service capability. So it's a good, it's a good example of how, it's not exciting, it's not very sexy, I think, but it is pretty important to keep utilities reliable in the community, so.
Further comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. We move on to item 9F, which is Resolution 2528. This is page 157. This is consideration of a pay plan for non-represented employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Young, HR Director for the city. I have for you this evening Resolution 2025-28, amending the 2025 Pay Plan for Non-Represented Employees to reclassify the Energy Services Operation Analyst Position to Finance Officer. The Operations Analyst Position within Energy Services was recently vacated. This provided an opportunity to reassess the department's evolving organizational and financial management needs. Management has determined that reclassifying the Operations Analyst Position to Finance Officer will better align staffing with the department's strategic priorities and their commitment to ensuring strong financial stewardship, operational efficiency, and compliance with increasingly complex regulatory requirements. The city's Public Works Department has demonstrated the critical importance of a finance officer position in strengthening fiscal oversight, supporting long-term planning, and improving service delivery. The estimated financial impact of this reclassification for the remainder of 2025 is estimated to be about $1,500, inclusive of benefits and payroll costs. For 2026, it's estimated to be approximately $12,225, also inclusive of payroll and benefit costs. These estimates are based on the top step of the pay range for finance officer. However, new employees are typically hired between entry and midpoint, depending on experience, so that's a high estimate. This position's FTE and expenditure authority and/or budget is split between the electric utility and the natural gas utility funds, and the necessary budget expenditure authority will be included in the next supplemental 2025-2026 biennial budget. With that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-28 as presented, including the approval of necessary budget adjustments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Hearing none. Anybody in the audience? Council, Resolution 2528.
I'll move Resolution 2528, amending the 2025 Pay Plan for Non-Represented Employees.
I'll second.
Motion, second to approve Resolution 2528, which amends the 2025 Pay Plan for Non-Employed Employees. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in.
Question. Is including approval of the necessary budget adjustment important to be in that motion? Is that obvious, or?
I just.
We will amend. Can we just amend?
Amended as, yeah.
Second agrees?
Yes, as presented.
Okay, includes the budget.
In the agenda. Necessary budget adjustments.
It's going to go back to us anyway.
There you go.
For actual adjustment approval later. Okay, so we have a motion, second for the Resolution 2528, which amends the pay plan and provides for budget adjustments. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Page 168. We have Resolution 2529, which would accept a request from the estate of Pamela D. Gruders Schmidt for the city's animal shelter. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Council. City Attorney Chris Horner. A couple of you have in front of you a resolution to accept a request from the estate of Pamela D. Gruders Schmidt. A couple of months ago, I was contacted by a local attorney who told me that Ms. Gruders Schmidt had left half of her estate to the Ellensburg Animal Shelter. The other half was to be left to Heifer International. The estate has been working on valuing all the value of her estate, working through the probate process. It looks like the estate will be worth over $800,000. There may be a couple of expenses that still need to be deducted from that before the probate gets closed. So since this is over $1,000, city council needs to formally approve. There may be a couple of decisions that the city needs to make before probate is closed on how the assets get transferred over to the city. So the thought was that we accept the bequests now so that the city manager and mayor can make those decisions, sign any necessary documents. And so you have a resolution to accept that request. It would be restricted to the animal shelter, and that was the only stipulation in the will. So very generous donation, and hopefully they're looking towards a payment of some to the city of Ellensburg before the end of the year.
That's fantastic.
Bad circumstances, but cool.
Yeah, a dozen more.
It's very generous. So this is all about just accepting it. I assume that the council will need to convene at some point and decide how to use this, specific to the animal shelter? I can think of capital improvement needs, and I can think of operations. So we haven't talked about that.
Typically restricted donations are set for capital investments, one-time expenditures.
So we can make that decision later. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Anybody in the audience? Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 2025-29 to accept the bequest from the estate of Pamela D. Gruders Schmidt to the city of Ellensburg Animals Shelter.
Second.
Motion, second to approve Resolution 2529, which accepts the bequest from the estate of Ms. Gruders Schmidt to the animal shelter. Any discussion?
God bless her. Yeah, it's amazingly generous.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Page 169, item 11A. This is a regional tactical response team interlocal with Kidattas County. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Evening, Council. My name is Jim Weed, Operations Captain at the Ellensburg Police Department. We're here tonight to present the interlocal agreement between Ellensburg PD and the Sheriff Department. The agreement is for joint operation of the Kidattas County Regional Response Team. This agreement provides for the sharing of personnel and equipment resources. Essentially, this is an updated version to include the current executives at EPD and KCSO, updating the participating agencies, and to memorialize the two agencies' cooperation KCSO, updating the participating agencies, and to memorialize the two agencies' cooperation to continue to provide a vital resource to our area. This group responds to high-risk, low-frequency events in our area, as well as Grant County as our co-responders. These incidents generally require tools and approaches beyond normal patrol operations in order to resolve them safely. We're asking the council to approve this ILA tonight. Any questions from anybody?
Questions of staff? Hearing none, any questions from the audience or comments from the audience? Okay, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, move to accept the interlocal agreement as presented. This agreement has met legal review with both government entities.
Second? So your, the motion is to authorize approval?
Accept the-
Accept?
Accept, it says.
Okay. Okay. Motion to accept the agreement as proposed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too of what I opposed. That motion passes. Okay, item 12A, page 179, Manager's Report.
Rapid-fire meeting. Good evening, Counsel. Heidi Verissimo, we're sitting with the manager. We have a number of items in the manager's report that's part of your packet. Just a reminder, AWC is in town, they host a lunch, and that's going to be at the Pearl October 9th. And so I think folks have registered. If you'd still like to attend, please contact Gretchen, and we'll make sure that we have your name in the hat, and that's again for District 4, which is Central Washington. Ribbon cutting on Friday morning, this Friday morning, to celebrate the Water Street and Transit Project completion, or substantially complete project. And that is at 9:00 AM on the corner of Fifth and Water, the northeast corner, and we're going to shut the road down for just a few minutes and take a moment to celebrate. That's one of the largest overlay projects that we've ever done. And if you remember what the front of the courthouse looked like before they had the new sidewalk and transit stop there, it's a wonderful improvement. So we've invited the county commissioners, the county auditor as well, to celebrate with us. So again, very brief ceremony, 9:00 AM on Friday. And this is a week where Waste Management provides a free drop-off at the transfer station for Ellensburg residents, and so you should receive a card in the mail if you haven't. Stop by our Public Works Office. For folks who need, who aren't able to self-haul, we have the ability to help you out, and so also contact the Public Works Department, and we can make arrangements for hauling. Let's see here, we included a flyer in the manager's report. We made a number of changes to our utility billing systems, to allow for additional time, to allow people to select a specific payment date. And so we'll be mailing this notice out in utility bills this month. Not everyone reads their bill, as we find out, and so wanted to provide an extra opportunity for that. One of that asks we have for people is to please check your contact information. We're working on implementing an emergency utility notification system, so it's a two-way communications. We're going to present that to counsel at your next meeting to demonstrate the capabilities of that. We're starting with our electric utility, and we'll expand that to water and natural gas down the road. But please update your contact information, because the phone number that you have in your system is the phone number that we would use again for emergencies. We're going to use this very, very conservative way. And so take some time this month to check up on that. And as counsel is aware, the city did issue a request for voluntary water conservation, and has taken steps ourselves to reduce our water, given ecology's order that went into effect today. And so that's to reduce water, the water, the order doesn't directly affect our municipal supply that we pull for our regular water, but we want to make sure that we're helping out the rest of our communities and doing our part to reduce ourselves. And I believe that's all I have. I did one more thing, we did have a, the Common Ground Workshop on Saturday. It was a long day, wonderful participation, really good conversations. I think there was some understanding that came out. And although there were a number of agreements in what you have in front of you, and we posted this on the city website, on our 2025 DEI page, that's hosting sort of the process and the steps in this, we've posted this, and these are agreements that the participants, the core participants came to that day. There are a lot of other agreements that they discussed, but weren't quite ready to get to an agreement on. So the process, I think, led to people talking to one another, and so from that, what we're going to do is work together with our consultants and bring back some, a range of options for counsel discussion for your, at your next meeting. And so staff are working hard on that, and trying to incorporate it and provide some recommendations for counsel to help advise on as we move forward with the comprehensive plan process. That's all I have.
Counsel, questions, and city manager?
So in the traditional comp plan amendment process, it will go to the Planning Commission. So are they going to see that in November then, if this council's going to see it first?
So council is going to see it. You don't make a decision on it, you're not adopting it, you're essentially weighing in on a recommendation for it. We also posted on the same webpage that Planning Commission will do a public hearing to review that, and will take testimony, and that, I believe, is November 13th. I don't think Dan is here. And then council will do a public hearing the beginning of December, December 1st, I believe, and for, second, if we move forward with the traditional process.
And, well, we'll see what you propose next month.
I did have one question. I was just, I was inspired by all the EPD presence tonight, so thank you very much for all the reports. I can't remember how long it's been, it's coming up on a year, I'm thinking when we, our council approved the participation in the FLOC program. And I was wondering, I think we talked about the idea of getting a report, a summary at some point, maybe that's a year-end. I don't know exactly, but I just wanted to plant that, because I'd be interested in seeing how that system's been working for us.
Chief on that.
Okay, Sarah?
No report tonight.
Nancy Goodlow.
Yeah, I had participated in the Bite of the Burg celebration, that was well-attended and a fun event. We've had a left board meeting. Today, at the Homeless Affordable Housing Commission, we came that close to approving sending the new five-year homeless affordable housing plan to the Board of Commissioners, but we still got two or three words that we have to work on. So we're going to do that in November. It's going to cut it close, because they have to approve that by the end of the year. But with conversation with, with the board, with Commissioner Walksmith and Public Health, felt like that would still be doable to wait till November. So that's exciting. It is a, it is really, really good plan. Went through a whole community process. It's probably the best process we've ever used to get to a plan for the next five years. So I'm really proud of that, and congratulations to Brittany and Public Health and all the folks that provided leadership on that. I attended the workshop, I think you covered it well. Handout was, was nice tonight to have that handout. I am very, very impressed with the Braver Angels model for how they do things. So, yeah. That's it.
For my committee assignments, I attended the left board and Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board, and of course, those drought conditions are affecting the fish. And, you know, that board, that's what they're working on. The, and also Utility Advisory Committee, where we, we talked about the BPA contract into the future, because you sign it several years in advance, which offers more flexibility than our current contract with them. Just, but it kind of raised a lot of questions for me. I also attended the CEIP, the CEDA reporting, and listened to the discussion there. And of course, there's the, on the gas side, the Climate Commitment Act, and I guess, I think we need a larger discussion from counsel on what our, what our goals are around energy, or what the priorities should be, whether it's avoiding Tier 2 costs with the BPA, or is it reducing our peak load, or is it, you know, there's any number of issues that are swirling out there, and, you know, is it resiliency or reliability, or, you know, what's our priorities, and what do we need to do to address those? Because there are all different solutions. So I just want to put that on the table for folks to think about, and maybe a study session in several months, we can talk about that. Also attended the Comp Plan Open House, which lots of people came, it was very well-attended, lots of different activities, so I'm hoping they gathered good information. And the Ellensburg Academy Historic Preservation, Trees and Weeds, and something else. And in the community, attended the Bite of the Burg and the Gallery One Dinner. So also coffee with counsel on Saturday. We had several good conversations, but it wasn't all in a group like it was at the Adult Activity Center. It was, Delano was talking to someone over there, and I was talking to someone, so it, we didn't all hear the same things, but a number of people wanted to chat, and that was good. And heading up, yeah, quite a few people. So I think that's still a good program, but it's the last one for this year. So that's it.
David?
Let's see, I had to dig back for a couple of weeks. So I attended the, on the 16th, Transportation, I'm not used to it yet, our Transportation Advisory Committee, which used to be called PTAC, which is now TAC. It's gotten easier. So that was good. We had some work done through Robin Reed, you know, most of us know Robin, and she's been doing some sort of surveying among stakeholders in the community and elsewhere. So it's really, she gave a presentation and part of her findings at this point, so I'm really looking forward to getting the full picture on that. But I think it was useful, and the feedback was kind of what we expected, you know, in terms of how the community views transit and values it. So it was kind of reaffirming that from just what people are saying. We're talking about not necessarily riders, but even like businesses in the community and others. I also, let's see, I, we had a meeting on the 17th, the Community Grant Program, Council Member Goodlow, Council Member Osham and I, we met and evaluated the applications, and we've made our recommendations, and those will be coming to counsel here in the next meeting or two. We had, as I don't remember the exact numbers, I think we had something on the order of $75,000 worth of ask and about $25,000 or less to give, so we had some, and there was, interestingly enough, we had some feedback for the manager's office about, for next year, maybe creating a more complete matrix of all the applications to all the funds, because we found some applications were dipping into multiple-city funds, which is probably okay, but maybe it's something we should talk about. We felt like, you know, maybe one fund per customer kind of thing, but that's another conversation. I also attended the Comp Plan Open House, I agree. It was very well-attended, I thought, between the consultant and the staff, I think every, you know, every bit of the How Home space was utilized, and the people just gravitated to what they were interested in, it was good. Attended the Earth Commission meeting on the 18th, and also on the 19th, attended along with a couple of other council members, the ribbon cutting for our new Addison Place Affordable Housing Project, Hope Sources Project over on Pearl. So I remember who was there, but it was, who was there also. But it was good, we had a, I think if I remember, it's eight, eight new units, brand-new units, and they're going to be occupied here in the next, they're, we're finished, so I think they're in the application process now. So that's another example of partners, community coming together. It's not all on the city to solve these projects, even if we could. So congratulations to Hope Source on that. And I'm going to be, I'm in search of more information. I'm going to be out of town most of the week, I'm going to the American Planning Association Conference in Tacoma, so unfortunately, there's some events here, but I'm going to figure out what everybody else is doing to solve problems like we face. So that's all I have. It'll be fun, a lot of planners, a lot of planners.
Real quick question, where are we at with the cold weather shelter? Did we get our thing worked out with the county? Feel like there was something that we were working-
The county is working on the operating agreement, they have a proposed, they had one proposal, and they're working on negotiating that. But we've secured the site, and they're working on making some accommodations for it.
And we usually get that running by the end of October?
Beginning of November. Typically, it starts the 15th of November. This year, they wanted to try to start it beginning of November through the end of March, so extend the season for two days.
Understood, understood, just curious. All right, thank you. Buskers and Burg, that was good on the 27th, coffee with counsel, still amazed by the UC Unity Park, just an observation there with the farmer's market, great community event, a lot of people sitting out there relaxing, enjoying the benches, enjoying the views, kids running up and down the stage, and at least 60 people taking photos with the bull, which I was shocked. I did not know the bull was that popular.
The bull is more popular than the council, I will tell you that.
Absolutely, 100%. Absolutely. So anyway, that was great. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce, they organized the UC Summit. This was a collection of all the students that are within construction within all the high schools in the county, except one high school wasn't able to come. And then a couple of CW students, and we did a tour of the Winko facility. That was amazing. There had to be over 100 students there, and they were asking questions, walking the site, and it's really great to inspire them as far as multiple paths to career success, whether that is in college or not college, trade school, whatever it is. It was just great to see future leaders in our community and showing them career paths. So I thought that was a really cool project with the chamber. Affordable Housing, we already talked, Affordable Housing, there'll be something coming up regarding the Inversion Project, there's some issues that we want to discuss about that. I'll let Rich take care of KICOM. Law and Justice is for a future meeting, Utility Advisory Committee, future meeting, and Solid Ways is also a future meeting. That's it.
Judge?
I also was able to attend the first half of the Braver Angels meeting. I'd never seen a process like that before, so it was interesting. It was also interesting, the orange and the green dot, and it was kind of different, because you really saw, I saw people more, saw names versus dots, and so, but it was also good to see lots of people on both sides engaged and talking. So it'll be certainly interesting to see where it goes from there. Coming up, I've got both parks and Finance Committee meeting coming up. And then tomorrow, game three, it's one-on-one, Mariners, keep rooting for them. I've got a candlelit at home, it's been too long since it's been significant, so. Go Avs.
The big dumper.
I made a presentation with AWC regarding emergency management, funding, mitigation, preparation, prevention, response, and recovery. Most of that money's going away. That was up in Wenatchee Friday. And then, just kind of as an FYI, we airlifted somewhere between 100 and 120 people out of this county. The helicopter that crashed in Easton about 10 days ago did not cause any serious injuries, did not negatively impact the patient who was waiting for air transport and had to get a different ride. But I just kind of wanted to just point out, it's a, it's an incredibly valuable service. There are two providers, primary providers in this county, Lifelight and Airlift. Airlift is about 90% of the business here. But it's a very proportionally very high-risk way to transport people, so just, it's also very expensive. On October 20th, I need to be at some ICS training all week in Everett, there is no feasible way for me to get back, so I'm going to attend that meeting remotely. November 3rd, I'm going to be in Hawaii, and I'm not coming to the meeting remotely or otherwise, so I need an excused absence.
Move to grant the mayor an excused absence for the November 3rd meeting?
I'll be in Waikoloa. So motion second to grant an approved absence for November 3rd, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, thank you. I was so excited about the Water Street ribbon cutting, I went last week.
Did you practice? How long do you stand there with your scissors?
About 10 minutes. I was hoping it was coming. There's an employment diversity meeting next week, I have to be in Wenatchee for State 911. It's at the Ridge Restaurant, they serve appetizers and things like that. It's free, it's through the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee. I think the city- I think the city should be represented. Is anybody available and willing to go to this?
I think it's possible.
I will be in Wenatchee at State 911 meetings. I think it would be good if the city had elected or somebody from staff to go to that. That would be awesome.
Can Gretchen send it in an email, invitation? Absolutely.
It was in our packet, I think, the last time around. For COG, the Standards of Cover Project, which is evaluating sort of efficacy of emergency and fire and EMS services in Kidittas County collectively, is underway. We're looking at data sets and sort of trying to prime that project, so it doesn't, so you can decrease the cost a little bit and get really, really solid data to the agency so they can make long-term decisions. Did attend the Comp Plan, and Kitcom's meeting is on the 9th, which normally, you know, nobody from the public shows up, it doesn't hurt our feelings. But we're discussing the budget, so it's your money, if you want to show up. It's 1:30 on the 9th at Station 21, which is 2020 Vantage Highway. So public is welcome to those. And there is a virtual option, you can get off our website, it's on the agenda, which will be posted tomorrow morning. And that's all I got?
Mayor, one more item.
Yes.
On the dais, I would just like to highlight, especially since Dr. Carr is in the audience, you have a Journal of Intelligence and Analysis. There's an article, "Role of Police-Community Interaction in Strategic Crime Intelligence" by Dr. Carr and Cody Stoddard from Central Washington University. Please take, take a read, we should very, be very proud of our team.
Can we get this autographed?
Can we make sure that that stuff gets in my mailbox?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Since he's being excused, I would like to request an excused absence for November 17th.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion second to approve an, to, to an approved absence for Councilmember Lowquist for November 17th, regular city council meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Hi, Rich.
Yes.
I'm going to, to this.
Thank you. It's actually really, it's really cool.